The council is now back in session. We have heard from Area Plan. We have heard from the petitioner. We have had the council discussion with the petitioner. We are now ready for the public hearing on Bill Number 33-24. Let me lay out how this is going to work. You can come to the podium to speak either in favor or opposed at the appropriate time. We would ask that you sign in on the tablet before you speak. In fact, if either side is long, go ahead and start lining up in advance. Sign in. When you get to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to address the council. Please try not to be redundant of what other speakers have already said tonight. We realize that some of that may happen, but try not to just repeat what everybody's saying. All right? So with that said, we will open to public hearing on Bill Number 33-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Please come forward, sign in, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Ken Prince, Director of Planning and Community Development for the city of Mishawaka. Obviously, I was here earlier. We've just, as a city, wanted to present that we are in favor of this project. We believe that this is a huge project for St. Joseph County and for perspective. Mishawaka only grows by about forty acres a year. Over the last ten years, we've averaged a little over $100 million of new construction every year. This one project represents the equivalent of multiple decades of new development. Most importantly, it is large, but it's also a low-impact development. It is exactly what we want to see to diversify the economy. A data center represents a growing need in the global economy that is projected to continue to grow for decades to come. Regarding some of the concerns expressed, and this is just from the city perspective, so take it for what it is. From a traffic perspective, 300 employees likely working three shifts a day is a very, very low. I can't imagine a comparable low-impact traffic use for 900 acres. For comparable residential, single-family subdivision, if you're at three units an acre, that's 2,700 homes. When you do traffic planning, you typically count on 10 cars a day. That would be 27,000 trips. At 300 employees, what you're talking about is something the equivalent of Golden Corral on Main Street in terms of the traffic coming in and out of it. So for 900 acres, that's an incredibly low traffic use. Regarding the Judy Creek water quality, 100 feet on either side of the creek is significant. That represents about 37 acres of green space that goes along the creek. In comparison, when the county approved Windy Brook subdivision, some of the homes are 100 to 200 feet apart, and the creek is their backyard. So literally, the creek runs between in that 100 or 200-foot area. And that is, so we believe firmly that Judy Creek water quality will improve as part of the development. And then regarding the annexation issue, this is not a county versus city issue. Every person that lives in the city of Mishawaka pays county taxes. We're not taking anything away from anyone that lives in the area. When you look at developments that have occurred in the Granger area, Heritage Square, Grand View, and the Beacon Medical Complex, were all a result of city investments and partnerships in those areas. As Mr. Dan mentioned, the city has only grown by voluntary annexations in the last quarter century. In that time, we have not annexed anyone against their will, and we have no plans to annex any existing Granger developments. So if annexed, and that's yet to be determined, the data center would pay more overall taxes if they were in the city versus the county. As you know, the city is just one taxing unit, and our taxes would be on top of other taxing units. And we would also be responsible for providing city services to the site. We would be responsible for taking over the roads and, as well as, providing for police and fire protection. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Paul Blum. I live at 52682 Current Road with my wife, family. We are the sellers of the property. We are in favor of the sale. And we have been buying farm ground, and we'll invest the money in more farm ground. And I ask that everybody vote in favor. Thank you very much.
Frank Augustino, 131 South Taylor Street, South Bend, Indiana. I am the attorney for the seller in this case. I ask that you vote favorably for this. I would note that this project went before Area Plan Commission. They tabled it, so it already sat for a 30-day period. Then that came to the council with a favorable recommendation from Area Plan. As was already stated by the staff, they considered the state requirements for rezoning, that it fit the comprehensive plan, that it was the best use for the property. It meets those requirements. That's the opinion of the staff. It's not just the opinion of the seller. I'd also ask you to note the restrictions to which have been agreed to are listed as special uses under the change of zoning. If there was a special-use change of zoning, you'd have a separate petition to allow that special use. This is a primary use during this change of zoning. Other uses under industrial would also include childcare. So this is not a nuclear bomb shelter. This is not China buying up farmland. This is just a data center. I ask you to approve that. I commend you, council members, for being considerate of your constituents, hearing them out, and asking for their voices to be heard. That is much appreciated as a member of this community. And again, we ask for you to take your vote tonight and make that in favor. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Grace Johnson. My address is 509909 Brownstone Drive. And like others, we moved to St. Joe County from Chicago two years ago in search of a thriving community to raise our family. As a mother of two children with disabilities, one with autism, so on a personal note, thank you for approving the autism center. It's a huge benefit to our kids. Finding a supportive community that meets our family needs both now and in the future was exactly what we discovered here. Northwest Indiana's population has continued to grow, as we've heard tonight. To accommodate this growth, there are ongoing expansions in hospitals and improvements in school facilities throughout Northwest Indiana's. As a result, it's inevitable that more companies will be drawn to this area. This change brings with it prosperity and countless opportunities, not just in terms of job prospects between hospitals, schools, and companies, but also for local businesses that support this growth. Construction workers, craftsmen, and many others will benefit from this expansion. I wholeheartedly support this rezoning request and am eager to be part of this growth. It is clear that development is headed our way one way or another, and I ask for your vote of approval today, and thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Lane. I live at 52800 Spring Mill Court in Granger. I have lived in this community since the late 1980s. I came here first for education at St. Mary's and then Notre Dame, but chose to stay to raise my family. I've been employed by the University of Notre Dame for almost 27 years, and in 2017 was asked to lead the Notre Dame Trail to celebrate the 175th anniversary of the institution. We retraced Father Soren's steps from Vincennes, Indiana, all the way to campus to actually connect with the humble beginnings, but also to look forward to the future with confidence. One of the signature events of the Notre Dame Trail was held at the St. Joe Farm to help educate this incredible history of the farm and its connection to the Congregation of Holy Cross and our greater community. This is exactly what the owners of the St. Joe Farm are trying to do. They are holding on to the history and moving forward with confidence for the community's future. For 125 years, Holy Cross brothers and sisters worked that farm to provide food and milk for students, faculty, and the administration of Notre Dame. Anyone who is familiar with the history of St. Joe Farm knows that it has provided for this community again and again. First, food, then solar energy, and now by bringing a data center to our community, bringing jobs and improvements to the area. I support this rezoning request and am excited to see the new chapter of St. Joe Farm again supporting our community. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marguerite Gulyak, 1768 Hackberry Lane in Lake Forest, Illinois. I was born in Mishawaka, and I was raised in South Bend. And first, I just want to say thank you for the time to speak today as well. I have an immense sense of pride in calling South Bend home. I think South Bend is a very unique area. It's filled with people who take care of their families. They work really hard, and they want the best for their community. I was fortunate enough to grow up in a family where the ideals of working hard and treating people well led to a path of prosperity in life, not just economically, but also personally. I'm in favor of the vote of favorable for the St. Joe Farm rezon because I love my family, I love my friends, I love my community here, and I want them to have the opportunity to see the expansion of jobs and the expansion of the economic development here in South Bend. Thank you.
Derek Dieter, 1740 Portage Avenue, 46616. Speaking as both a citizen and commissioner, District Two. I think everybody up on the panel here, all our employees, have been working extremely hard in the entire county for growth, looking for jobs, looking for tax base. This is another classic example of people who have land that have the opportunity to do this, which enhances all that, what you all do and we do as commissioners, especially everybody on the 7th and 11th floor who, again, work in this entire county to make it a better place to live. So with everything that's been going on, I think it's very exciting. We're getting more jobs here. We're getting more people. There's finally excitement for growth in St. Joe County, and I think this is another opportunity for things to go the right way. So I am totally in favor of this project.
Good evening. Excuse me, sat too long. Carl Baxmeyer, Board of Commissioners, speaking also as a citizen as well, 17711 Woodridge Drive, South Bend. I think Derek said a lot of it well, and you heard a lot earlier. I think the council is to be commended for, with all due respect to Congresswoman Drake, I'm glad that you didn't delay this, because it does give you got a roomful of people who would like to ask questions, and it's good that their voice is being heard. When this was first proposed and came to our attention, the concern I had when the rezoning came up was the open-ended question of changing the classification from agricultural to industrial without any of the written agreements that, conditions that are part of this. Question about protecting Judy Creek, the traffic study. That should have been, in my opinion, part of the original presentation to APC. The Area Plan Commission listened, and those additions were made. So what we have is a rezoning tonight. Some of the questions that will come up are site-specific, and we can't expect the company to invest money in that detailed engineering study to answer some of the good questions that folks want to raise until they know that the property, they can move ahead, that the property is zoned. So that's what a point I want to make is that this is the first in a series of steps that are going to come before you. And I would urge you to go ahead and rezon this and continue the process and continue to listen to the people as questions come up, details emerge. But there's more time for that down the road. But nothing happens unless the property gets rezoned. And speaking for myself, as well as Commissioner Dieter and Tony Hazen, who couldn't be here tonight, the three of us strongly support this rezoning request. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Blum, Paul's wife, living at the St. Joe Farm. And I just wanted to make a small point that the farm, we've always tried to serve the community, and we've been approached different times with other projects that we've said no to, very lucrative projects because we didn't think, you know, it wasn't something we thought would benefit the community. This just seems like a home run. It's up for you to decide. You're the ones who are educated here with all the information, and we appreciate so much all the work the area commission's done and you've done to make this decision for everyone, because you're the ones who are getting all this information. And I also wanted just to say, as a citizen of our country, that these data centers are so important for the progress for our country on a worldwide basis. And our little, you know, county here is being given the opportunity to really help do some good work for our country that's essential in the world market, you know? So we're just a little piece of this pie, but it's a huge piece. And I think that even if there's a few little inconveniences, if we could do it for the betterment of our country, I think that's a very valid thing also. But thank you so much for your consideration and asking for a positive vote tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Peter J. Augustino, 131 South Taylor Street, South Bend, Indiana. I'm here to speak in support of the approval of the rezoning here. But I'm really here because of Kathy and Paul Blum, because I know the kind of people that they are, outstanding citizens in this community who have raised a very large family, many of which are here. Raise your hand if you're a Blum family member. And I know they're not all here, but there's quite a few of them. They are a model family in this community, and I know for a fact that there's no way that Paul Blum and Kathy Blum would do anything next door to where they're going to continue to live that would be harmful to this community. A couple of weeks ago, I was here on behalf of another farmer selling land, 640 acres. That farmer sold the land and bought, sold 640 acres, bought 1,025-acre land for farming in St. Joe County. That's what happens when farmers get to sell property. They buy more farmland. Now, why do we need a data center here? Why is it important? Individuals, businesses, governments, universities, schools, hospitals, they all depend on these data centers, because our information is going up in the cloud. You can't survive, you can't thrive in business in the world today if you're not having access to cloud storage. Your medical records are there. Requirements coming down the road in terms of storing government records, videotaping of your public meetings, all this is going up in the cloud. Families, friends who use social media, who exchange photos, who keep in contact, who maintain worldwide connections with family and friends across the world, they use these data centers. Ever buy a product through Amazon or Walmart? I know I have. Data centers. Data centers are essential now because so much information is kept on the cloud. And it's impossible for a small business, and I'm a small-business operator, to do this anymore inside your office. We don't have the capacity. We don't have the security. We don't have the ability to take a risk of our data crashing. This is what data centers do. And in this particular case, there's the secondary gain of expanding water and sewer toward Granger, and that is significant. So there are many good reasons to do this tonight, and I hope and pray that you will approve the zoning. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one, we will now move to those in the room who wish to speak in opposition to the bill. Please come forward, sign in. You'll have three minutes. State your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to address the council.
Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlisle. The test-crash dummy for St. Joseph County. We're learning about this stuff firsthand. We've made some mistakes. We try to mitigate the damages. I learned information just two days ago about these lovely data centers. Yeah, there's a place for them. Yeah, they need a place. The place is not over top of our water supply. You've got eight and a half million gallons running through your aquifer there. We've got 46 million gallons a day running through our aquifer, which is endangered by, as I found out two days ago, these centers, our centers over in New Carlisle will hold belly tanks totaling 1.6 million gallons of diesel fuel in the event of a power outage that then these plants will have to fire back up using this. Anybody who's dealt with diesel knows it is nasty stuff. It is polluting. If it gets into the water, God help us. Please look at this. Yes, data centers do have their place. It is not over top of our fresh water. Thank you.
Mr. Caruso, can you please sign in?
I did.
Emily Trousche, 10521 Fawnwoods Court, Granger. I'm not going to stand here with my list of dozens of questions because it is very clear we will not get them answered later, or maybe ever, as the chance to get more clarity was voted down tonight. What I do want to stand here and focus on is more of a fundamental change that deserves to be reviewed and the process in which it takes to receive very much-needed info on such a massive development that can change Granger forever as we know it. I'm quoting Angela Smith, St. Joe County Senior Planner here, from some email correspondence from yesterday with her. "We are only at the zoning phase of the project. Many of the site details will come once the prospective buyer is able to acquire the site. Why is it that we have to bend the knee to a prospective buyer that we should have no loyalty to, to get real answers on how they plan to utilize the land and its business so we can make an informed decision on what's best for our community? This is beyond backward and very reminiscent of corrupt Washington, D.C. politics of needing to pass the bill to see what's inside. I commend Councilman Tanner for stating that if the buyer is willing to move on, if we send it back to committee, that should be very telling, and we should pause to question their intentions. You should be better than this. I know most of the constituencies of St. Joe County don't want to become the county of data centers. We have so much more to us in what this special and unique area brings to the state of Indiana. Let's not let it collapse to become another concrete jungle. Look around the whole county. Every parcel of land that has woods, prairie, or farmland is up for the highest bidder, and this isn't something to be proud of. I would also like to address most of us in this room have felt that some of you have not heard us or advocated for us. You have a chance to change that. There are some very reasonable concerns being voiced by the people who will need to live with your decision. It is your public duty to represent your constituents and do right by them." I'd actually like to share a quote from Dan's website. "Sometimes it feels like your voice isn't heard. I try my best to speak with and advocate for as many people in my community as possible. Dan, you saw a roomful of 200-plus people holding up red cards last week. You serve those people. I have over 230 signatures of many who are here or on Zoom that are not for the rezoning. It was disappointing to see you not vote to send it back to the committee. I'm not sure how much more we can spell it out for you on our displeasure of where this is headed and, quite honestly, how you've decided to handle our concerns with dismissive responses to those that challenge you to be more inquisitive. You are beholden to us, not the bank of St. Joe County. That is what being a good and honorable councilman is about. I stand here with our 20-plus pages of signatures of those who want to vote no on this rezoning. Since it was voted to not send this back to committee and force the hand of the buyer to be more transparent with us, I would like to remind you that your vote shouldn't be swayed by money, tax revenues, or incentives, but rather the wishes of your people. You are our representatives and our voice. You must honor the will of your people because that is your duty. Thank you."
Charlotte Wolf, 21439 Osborne Road, Lakeville. With all due respect to the Blooms and recognizing the needs for data centers, I do respectfully disagree with this particular proposal. However, I do have some ideas for how a compromise could be engineered. For one thing, my biggest gripe with this whole process is that the comprehensive plan of 2002 is not really adequate to address the challenges of proposals like this. And as of two years ago now, we came up as a community, we came up with updates to the county comprehensive plan. Those are sitting on some shelf gathering dust with no recognition for the hundreds of hours that went in to developing those recommendations from all sectors of our community. The second point, the current conditions and character of the land is rural, and this project will convert it from being rural to being completely developed. The most desirable use, again, that is very debatable and not quantifiable necessarily, but it was said that this is the most desirable use by staff. I don't really understand that. Responsible development, again, I don't believe that as it stands right now, it is responsible. But again, that's debatable. A couple of things were said that I really strongly disagree with. One of them, Mr. Baxmeyer, nothing happens unless rezoned. I respectfully disagree. I don't think that this property needs to be rezoned to have some economic value. And I submitted comments on the form that was put up on Friday. It was stated earlier by the consultants that no questions were asked at all. And I guess that means that comments, even though it said comments in the little box, are not considered input. I actually did ask a question within my comments. And that was how much economic value could be obtained in water storage by restoring wetlands? So that was a question within my comments. The other comments that I had involved using the farm for local food production. And one of the attorneys said that the agriculture use was diminished due to residential development and use nearby. And I strongly disagree with that statement, because I have a small farm. I produce food that people eat in our community, and that's not a diminishment of agriculture. That's actually increased agriculture. Agriculture that requires putting organic matter back on the soil, not farming with fertilizers. That's not the only kind of farming there is. So I do strongly suggest that it keep being zoned agriculture. However, I would be open to some discussions about smaller. Is there such a thing as a small data center, like 20 to 30 acres up in that corner?
Ma'am?
Maybe?
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Greetings. My name is Pete Cullen, representing Othali LLC. I own a building on Bittersweet Road, 51345 Bittersweet Road. It is currently an industrial building. One of the reasons that Granger is a very desirable residential area is because it is peaceful and rural and safe. All of the technical questions are going to be answered. I have no faith that in another 30 days, if we let this go 30 days, all the technical questions will be answered about power, utilities, water, et cetera. But that's not the issue. The elephant in the room is the invasion of the Granger community by a large industrial complex and 900 acres that will eventually become obsolete. All industries do. You look at the Studebaker Corridor. Look at Oliver Plow. Look at South Bend Lay. They will all eventually become obsolete. The building that I own, which was built in the '70s, I'm on its fourth or fifth industrial use, and I've been there the longest. They all eventually go obsolete. So the problem I have with this zoning and this plan is these buildings in development are highly unique, bringing in water, sewer, a lot of electricity. What happens in 10 years when technology causes that to become obsolete? We have a blight in Granger. It's going to- We have a blight in Granger. It's going to be an industrial blight. That affects the peace and harmony of our community, and that's what we value the most. We don't value transformative wealth. We don't value jobs. We value our peacefulness. We value our safety and security in our rural community. Thank you.
My name is Kelly Creavy. I live at 5222 Dorchester Court in Granger. I first want to say it was really hard for me to decide to get up here and speak. I might even cry. We are close family friends with the Blooms. They're at my wedding. I don't want to hurt a relationship whatsoever. I love and respect them. Everyone who attested to them being very good people, they are. But I, for a million different reasons, opposed this and asked that you would not rezone. Just as the last gentleman mentioned, of this potentially being obsolete in a couple of years, there is tons of information online and different studies that say more than 50% of global enterprises will have moved to a serverless platform in the next 10 years. What happens when this facility has reached its lifespan? What do we do with it? I think once you go this far forward, you can't go back. There's also a lot of different statistics you can find online and information you can find online, studies that were done by real estate organizations that do this type of development all the time that say the power requirements for data centers double within five years every five years. And so we're equating what AEP can do now, but what happens when this increases in five years and then another five years? And also, I think another, I've sent a lot of questions to you all, and I know that you've seen that and addressed some of those, but another one that hasn't been addressed is the cooling systems. We know that those can release harmful pollutants into the air, contributing to smog and acid rain. Do we know what kind of coolants are going to be used in this facility? Do we know what the specific sustainability plan is? And I think it sounds like most of this, we don't know, and we won't know until it's after rezoned. And I think that's a scary thing. And so I just would ask, with full respect of their family, I truly do love and respect them, that you take all that into consideration and really listen to all the people that were there, probably 300 people a couple nights ago, with tons of concerns. And just to thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Amy Sanders, 51601 Brighton Court, Granger, Indiana. I first wanted to know if my three minutes start, or if we're also allowed to ask questions that weren't answered? I was kind of unclear at the beginning.
You have three minutes to say whatever you want in any format that you want.
Okay.
Only three minutes.
Okay. So I guess some of my biggest concerns are that we are looking at 900 acres of land. It's not a small piece of property. It will drastically change what Granger is known as for being a nice rural community. There was nothing said about the noise that's emitted from these buildings, other than it's supposed to be minimal, but researches that I've seen have said that there's a constant humming that comes from these buildings, and how loud that is is actually louder than we think because of how low decibel it is. It's heard further away. Another thing that was brought to attention to everyone is this land is not good for farming anymore. I hope that one of the farmers will speak up and say that this land is some of the best land in the county. It doesn't have to be watered all the time. Those wells shouldn't have to be used to get good yield out of the system. Let's see. How long will the construction take? Are we looking at Cleveland Road being down to one lane for a long period of time? Can these resources be provided by Mishawaka without building additional treatment plants or water towers in this area? Where will these power lines go? That was asked, and they said they don't know that yet. I think that's a huge concern for residents because being under high voltage lines has shown that it does cause cancer. Has the buyer been promised any tax abatements? Or will that be considered another deal breaker if the project is approved for zoning? How does that change the tax situation if this land is annexed by Mishawaka? Will the kickback be that much different? And then, as Kelly mentioned, what are the air pollutions that we're going to see from this? There was nothing mentioned about that, but if you think of when your computers work really hard, they get that weird smell to them. If you have a whole million-square-foot warehouse of hot servers, that smell has to go somewhere. Those chemicals have to go somewhere. And we don't want them in our air next to Harris Ball fields, MSA soccer fields, our neighborhoods that are right there. I just find it so hard to believe that a data center is the best use for this land, being so close to those neighborhoods, being right on that Judy Creek water line. There has to be a better option. It was clear that this buyer is willing to back out because they do have other options. Let them go somewhere else. We don't know enough of the details to let this pass. So please be courageous and say no for now, even if it's just a not yet.
Good evening. Steve Francis, Judee Lake Drive, Clay Township. I live on Judee Lake. It's a, we have a homeowners association. I was a former president. We have about 10 homes along Judee Creek, and the creek is connected to the lake. We swim in the lake and have about 30 homes there downstream from where you rezone this property. I do appreciate some of the changes that were made at the APC, but I would caution you, those changes were made because some of us are monitoring what's going on in this county, and we went to the APC. They wouldn't be arriving here with some of the written commitments and the Judee Creek buffer that you heard about without that involvement. So I do appreciate that the petitioner has made changes. However, they're inadequate. They really only extended the buffer by 25 feet. That's almost underwhelming to me. It's 150 feet, actually, probably not even 25. It was 150 feet, as Mr. Klein said, by law on drainage, and then they're extending it to 200. So they've got another 25 feet on each side. I do appreciate that they are committing. I'm not sure that's in the agreement, but they're committing to not do ag. And now I hear they're going to commit to do plantings rather than to prevent invasive species. This is happening bit by bit, dribble by dribble, as they hear us speak about the concerns we have. However, we're not done having concerns. Mr. Caruso mentioned the Amazon plant out there. I was looking at the air permit for the data center, which was filed on April 19th. $1.8 million of diesel stored on site, 650 megawatts of backup power. Now, 650 megawatts is about what the city of South Bend uses. It's a similar-sized data center. Apparently, the Googles, Microsofts, and Amazons of the world have found St. Joe County. And this is not going to be the first. It's not going to be the last. I think that we've got to ask questions about what happens if that diesel spills into the aquifer. What kind of drainage are you going to make into Judee Creek during construction and long term? You mentioned the water table down near Judee Creek, where you plan to build in the future is only one foot in some cases. You're going to have to drain that down to build on that property. So that's going to go into Judee Creek. You're going to have to get approval for that, I realize, but that approval is not hard and coming. I'm concerned that these questions have not been answered. Third, the water and sewer thing. Let's be honest here. When they go to pay for the water and sewer, they're going to get probably a tax abatement that's in lieu of taxes that they would pay to the county or in a TIF or to the city. So it really isn't the company paying for that water and sewer. It's they're getting a tax break that they use in order to pay for those tens of millions of dollars that they're going to extend to the site. I have many more questions. How will the AEP supply that power? They do not have the capability right now. So I will submit the questions. I ask you to vote no, unfortunately. It's a tough vote, but please do so. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Sill. I live at 10976 Anderson Road in Granger. And I first want to start out by thanking Councilwoman Drake for acknowledging the fact that there are a lot of concerns here tonight. I heard a few things tonight, in addition to my initial comments, that really concern me. And one is the fact that I heard repeatedly that this is phase one, that this is a site for favorable future industrial development, that this is just the start, like it's a slippery slope. I want to say, let's back up the bus. As far as I'm concerned, the comments, I'm glad that we're able to speak a little bit here and share our concerns, but to me, it's kind of like a day late and a dollar short because this has been going on, as was mentioned earlier. They've been looking at this for over a year, and we're just finding this out now. We are not trying to demonize a data center. We want our quiet Granger location to remain as it is, without industrial rezoning. Once it's rezoned, it's just a slippery slope for more of the same. I would like you to consider this. A 2022 study by the American Farmland Trust found that the US lost 11 million acres of farmland between 2001 and 2016. About 7 million acres of farmland were converted to low-density residential areas, while the remaining 4 million acres were lost to commercial buildings and industrial sites. Without better planning, the US could lose another 18.4 million acres of farmland by 2040. These actions carry economic and environmental impacts, which could include food scarcity. And this literally starts in our own backyards. There is wisdom in the adage, "You don't realize what you've got until it's gone." Where is the reverence for land? We all need to be intentional stewards of this precious commodity. Some things are more important than putting a dollar in your pocket. I stand with no to rezon. Please consider that when you put your vote out there tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Andrea Hartstein. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak tonight. I live at 50804 Partridge Woods Drive in Granger. I have lived in Granger since I was a child, and 1996 is when my family moved here. I just wanted to point out tonight, there were a lot of items on the agenda that none of us came to speak at. You are putting in a new business over there on State Route 23. You're putting in housing units over there by the business unit in Granger by those houses. We didn't come for any of that. We're not worried about those things. We're not against economic development, but we are concerned about what's happening here. This is a big deal to us. This is a big deal. Granger exists because of the Grange movement. We used to all be farmers. For decades, there were only 400 people in all of Granger. And then when the first farmers started selling their land to the developers to make the neighborhoods, that happened in the 60s and the 70s, and then here we are. And we had a chance in the 80s and 90s to become a town, to become incorporated, and we intentionally chose not to. The reason they chose not to was because they wanted to keep the red tape to a minimum. They wanted to keep taxes low, and that has been an intentional choice. And so what's happening here, we don't have a choice. We don't have a voice. We don't get a vote on the zoning laws. Zoning laws exist, from my understanding, to, yes, to protect the property owner, but also to protect the interests of the community around it. And if you are, how would we vote if we had a voice, if we had a choice? It has been said that, you know, when I ask questions, it has been asked, you know, who am I to stop this project from moving through? I would say the fact that it's zoned agriculture should be enough. If the community behind it would like it to stay agriculture, let it stay agriculture. For us, what is even more heartbreaking is that I don't truly believe what they say about Mishawaka wanting to annex us. Why are they providing so willingly power and water if they have no interest financially in tax revenues later on? They are telling the truth about residential. They do not want to annex us on the residential side because that doesn't make them any money. That takes a lot of money if they were to annex all of us. So they are annexing, and it's true. They've done Heritage Square is annexed by Mishawaka. They just annexed that section that's over there on Cleveland and Capitol. That's going to be the new girly leap, big thing. None of us came to fight that, but we're fighting this because this is important to us and to our community. Not only do we not have a voice and we don't have autonomy, but you're forcing us to, you take this farmland away, we are not farmers. I mean, we're not farmers to begin with, but this is the nail in our coffin of our identity in the community. Thank you.
Good evening. Marshall McMillan, 10981 Cougar Drive, Granger, Indiana. First, I want to say, when we were at the church gathering, and they had a few hundred people there that wanted to ask questions, we were told, even though it was an informational meeting, that we were not permitted to ask questions because we weren't here to answer questions. So now we've got three minutes. And please don't say anything somebody else has already said. Sorry. Let me try and cover something different. What about our common home? Once you put in all of this electricity, yes, Mishawaka's AEP can handle, the grid can handle it. It's not clean energy. So, okay, let's use some dirty energy when we're already dealing with the global warming. Let's put our water at risk with all of their million-gallon tanks that could leak, and everybody will say, oh, it won't leak, just like the pipelines don't leak. We're putting a lot of trust into people who are waving dollar bills and saying, do it because I want to have it there. We don't want it. The people of Granger don't want it. We came out last week to say it. We're here again to say it. We don't want it. It's not that it's a bad thing to have data centers, have them somewhere else. Make sure that they don't have the EMF going out there. They don't have the low-grade hum that's been causing all the mental problems in Virginia, where they've had multiple, first they were happy and they agreed to the rezoning. They were like, whoa, this will be good for us. Now they're complaining about it because once you've rezoned, you've opened the door, and it comes in not just one, but multiple. So now we need to just stop. We need to slow down, vote no, put it somewhere else. If they're that willing to go because of a 30-day hold, let them go. We don't need it in Granger. We don't want it in Granger. Please vote no.
Hello? I'm Candace Edwards. I live at 50680 Pheasant Cove Drive in Granger. I am here and would hope that I'm representing many of my neighbors. We know that a lot of development has started out in New Carlisle, and that development now looks like it is heading all the way east. And if there's any of our neighbors that don't realize, this is probably headed all the way to Elkhart. So even though we bought property in areas outside of the cities, east of the cities, we're going to become a city without voting. We don't have a choice, and it's all going to become commercial, industrial, I can see, all the way to Elkhart. And all of our land that we love, that we love being in the country, is going to be gone. And where do we go after that? I have asked the question, who's going to buy this property? Nobody wants to answer who is buying the property. Is it actually going to be purchased by somebody from a different country? Is it going to be built or leased by somebody in a different country? We've given up enough land here in the US. We don't need to give up more land to outsiders. And in terms of the traffic, they've talked about the small 200 acres that's going to increase the traffic and increase the power needed and increase the water needed. But there's another whole 700 acres that is going to be able to be purchased, and who knows how much power and water that is going to take and how much more traffic? I know somebody mentioned last week, we have a lot of Penn High School students from Granger that travel down Bittersweet Road to get to the high school. from Granger that travel down Bittersweet Road to get to the high school. And they are going to become more and more busy roads for our high schoolers. Because again, this is not going to stop at Bittersweet Road. It will continue east. There is absolutely no doubt. Once we get it going, it will continue to, to build. And we'll just, I mean, we're just, we don't have votes. So we're stuck because we don't have votes.
Dan Schmidt, 50779 Sherwood Drive. The biggest thing I think we've all heard tonight, there's a lot of information, some of it new that's come out tonight. It's a little frustrating that it didn't come out earlier, right? We came, given to us last Friday, and now here we are trying to get a vote on it. I think the biggest thing too, we've talked about environmental, we've talked about, you know, water and power and all these things, but what about the physiological? Has anyone on the council had any information on that? If you do a quick Google search and you look at the physiological impact of data centers, there are studies out there, peer-reviewed articles. One of them here is "The Cloud Is Material: On the Environmental Impacts of Computation and Data Storage." And I can quote this with the source, "But the acute and longitudinal physiological effects of industrial noise pollution are well documented to include hearing loss, elevated stress hormones like cortisol, hypertension, and insomnia." So it's not just that the noise would be in the acceptable range, it would be, but it's the constant. There is no turning off the noise. The data center runs 24 hours. They have the fuel storage there to back it up to ensure it does. So that's where I think that the council needs to factor that in too. What does that quality of life look like for Granger? How is that going to impact not just the people that live there, but then the animals and the pets and all the other things that are going to be a part of that constant hum? I, honestly, I'm not against the Bloom family zoning this as industrial. I'm against them zoning industrial for a data center. Right? I understand progress needs to be made. I think it's similar to like we heard tonight with the concrete, it just wasn't the right spot. We were able to work and find the right spot, and maybe that's where we can put in a data center. We had the same thing go through with Granger where we talked about the park and the county garage. There's a big uproar on that, we were able to find a great spot for it. I think that's where we need to focus, is finding the right spot for this. And that's where it's concerning to me, where if they don't get their way, they're going to pick up their ball and go home. Right? All we were asking was for 30 more days to do our due diligence and do a little more work, and it's not on the table. So unfortunately, I understand how your hand's forced tonight to vote.
Hi, my name is Katie Paulus. I live at 11988 Bergamont Drive in Granger. I come to you tonight as a farmer's daughter who has grown up in the agricultural world. I really hate to see this agricultural property rezoned and used for anything other than agricultural use. We, as a country, are letting all of the farmland be sold off, as others have stated tonight. And what, how are we sustaining ourselves as a country? We are beholden to others for our food, for our, for our merchandise, for other things. And when are we going to invest back into ourselves? I also have concerns with the traffic in this local area because again, it is a southbound pass for our Penn High School students. And that sightline over the bridge may be acceptable for a car. What is it with the bus full of students? What is it when all of that traffic is coming in to build in that location? And we say that the majority of the traffic is going to come from Cleveland Road? However, if that parking lot, if you look at the plans that were, that were submitted tonight, why wouldn't they use the Bittersweet entrance? It's going to be much closer to that data center than coming off of Cleveland Road. So I have significant concerns about the traffic in that particular area. Also, all the other data centers that have been proposed in New Carlisle and in Fort Wayne have 4,000-plus feet of separation between residential places and the data center itself. We're looking at 500 feet between this data center and the residents that cross just across the toll road. I would urge this council to table this vote or to vote no tonight so that we can further explore all of the impact that this is going to have on the environment, our health and well-being of the residents of Granger, and we can come to some type of agreement in terms of where this data center belongs. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Tarwaki. I live at 51153 Placid Point Court, Granger, Indiana. I just very quickly want to make a point that I hope you all notice. The people in favor of this were all from South Bend and Mishawaka and, or, I'm sorry, opposing, and everybody that's in favor live in Granger. This truly affects us day in and day out, and I hope that you can vote on our behalf.
Hello, I'm Rex Weed, 13630 Anderson Road. I live really close to this. How many people are against this tonight? Show of hands. That should speak volumes. We live here, and like the lady that said earlier, the people that got up and spoke, South Bend, South Bend, Notre Dame, these are, the people that are here live in this and are going to be affected this our whole lives. Our property values are going to drop. This is premium farmland. You realize what a gift that is. These people will be filthy rich selling it to another farmer. This is all about big money and power, has nothing to do with the local people and serving the local people. Now, sounds like this deal is done? I, the last time I spoke was the Granger sewer, so I hope, you know, it's not a bad omen here. It didn't go well, and you can think, you know, Ken Prince, that, "Hey, we can't have the sewer in Granger, we need to go to Edwardsburg." But no, hey, we need it now. And also, Ken mentioned about the Judy Creek, and I've been in commercial construction for 38 years, retired. The asphalt, the roof, all the hard surfaces will be drained somewhere. There is a high-water table. Ken would never let us build a dry well in this area, so I'm interested to see what they're going to come up with. And to say that you're, you're helping Judy Creek by not having the chemicals from the farm is ludicrous because there's going to be more runoff from the trucks, the oil, the asphalt. You ever see asphalt go down new and you see the sheen on it? You see the dry wells going, the water goes in the water, you know? It's just not good. Now, the deal's been done, so if you know the art of the deal, what you need to do is tell these people, "Hey, we need to be elite. We need to have the roofs made that you can gather your water." Anybody brought that up? How about the water that's going on in the ground? Let's gather it up, recycle that. You stand here right now where you have the, a point where you can tell these people, here's what we have to do. Get a better deal. Get something you can say to the community, "This is an environmentally state-of-the-art, not just something they did in North Carol, out west here." I hope for your vote to say, "No, this is, think of all the thousands of millions of people that are not going to get fed with this farmland." I'm surprised that the good people here that are so great, that own it, God bless them, but they're taking food from everyone for the rest of their life, and now we have a concrete jungle. And what you need to do, all that topsoil is going to get moved off the building.
Your time has expired, sir. Thank you.
I'd like all that topsoil brought back because the blackberry that you own is obsolete.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And this will be obsolete in 20 years. What are we doing with this building? The land, it can't be farmed again.
Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? We will move online. Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Mary, I see you're first. Go ahead, please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Mary Countryman, 52959 Timothy Road in Carlisle. Thank you to the council members who spoke up at the beginning of the meeting for the citizens. Your efforts are appreciated. Excuse me. A few notes I was taking along the way. Once again, the comp plan is mentioned with the most desirable, best-use phrase, without mentioning the importance of preserving agriculture. That was so strongly stressed in that same comp plan, so I find it ironic every time they bring that up. I've heard also phrases of, from what we're told, and it's my understanding, and we don't know exactly, those should be big red flags there to say no. And question, is there any chance this company will use an existing well or sink their own well and not use Mishawaka water? I don't know if that's been mentioned or brought up, and if I missed it or not. There would be no monitoring of the usage if it was coming out of their own water, if they tapped into one of those existing wells. This reminds me too much of a, not too long ago, meeting where there was much pressure with the timeline and a threat of St. Joe County being sued if a certain project wasn't done by a certain date that was promised by Mr. Shaliel. Why is St. Joe County being bullied into accepting something or anything when there is this pressure of these exploding offers? Anything presented and pushed as these exploding offers should immediately, immediately send up red flags. 30 days is not too long to wait, especially with something this huge. I'm not sure what's worse, when the AE Representative Shelley Klug sat behind me during a GM County Council meeting and said to the GM reps, quote, "I'll be glad when these meetings are over. I don't know what these people are whining about," unquote, or the fact that they didn't show up for a meeting tonight. There's clearly a problem when so many citizens are against, excuse me, against any of this. Any project, proposed project, and for far, and far less speaking for it, with usually those that are speaking for it are the ones who will benefit from it financially, but they don't even live near the project. Every time this happens, our democracy dies. Is this the beginning of another Tiff district? I'm seeing and hearing so many similarities and wondering how big this one will grow to. Will it grow to the 22,000 acres also? Beat bit by bit, acre by acre? Please vote no. Please vote with the majority of the speakers. Vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl, you're next. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Cheryl Nix, 17901 Sable Ridge Drive. I live in Clay Township. I'd like to read an excerpt from an article that was in the Tribune, published April 16th, entitled "100 Years of Isaac Walton: Fishing, Shooting Arrows, and Advocating for Judea Creek." The league is a quiet force that owns and maintains the oft-used public St. Joseph River access just north of Cleveland Road. But the chapter also serves as a watchdog for Judea Creek. That advocacy never rests for Chapter Secretary J.C. Spoerlatter, who right now is carefully watching yet another proposed development on the creek's banks. This time on 914 acres of the old St. Joe Farm in Granger, where an unnamed developer aims to build a business tech campus with up to 300 workers. County officials say the developer proposes a 200-foot green buffer around Judea Creek, which ultimately flows to Isaac Walton. It's more than the county requires, but Spoerlatter, who serves on the Judea Creek Task Force, which advises the county drainage board, remains wary until he sees real assurances. Silty, warm drainage could kill the creek and the trout, who cannot live without its extra cold, clean water. Warmer water has less oxygen, and trout can't tolerate it. "We don't want to stop people from developing their property," he says. "We don't want them to hurt the creek." I imagine that that trout and that fishing is a huge draw for the county. I imagine that a lot of money comes into St. Joseph County when trout fishermen want to fish for trout in our St. Joe River. I think we have to be really, really careful here. So I would encourage a no vote today. Thank you.
Nate, please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
This is Nate Kelly, 11355 Nicole Drive, North Granger, Indiana. I was not expecting this, this meeting to still be ongoing. I'm actually out of town on a work trip. Just kind of clicked the link, and there must be a lot of people there speaking in opposition to this. That should tell you what you need, right? How often do this many people show up and speak against something in county council, whatever? Any government meeting, there's typically, you know, less than 20 people there. Your job is public, you're, you guys need to represent the public interest. And moving this along so fast just seems to be, it, it just doesn't seem right. It's a big project. It's going to forever change the landscape of Granger. You can never, ever take it back. And I am just asking that you guys please table this, vote no. I've missed the entire meeting, so I don't know exactly what new information was brought, but it's clear that the people of Granger do not want this. Or the people of Granger do not feel comfortable with the amount of information that has been shared. So please, Dan, I know you're probably not going to listen to the people of Granger, but the other council members, please take our word and at least table it. Vote no if you can. Thanks.
Is there anyone else online who wishes to speak in opposition?
I would. My name is Jennifer Burks, and I live at 51756 Westgate Drive in Granger. I would like you to vote in opposition for many of the reasons that everyone has said this evening. I appreciate all of you sitting there and listening to all of our voices. I would especially like to thank Amy Drake. She has been amazing in helping me understand this project better. I appreciate everyone's time, and thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who wishes to speak in opposition? Can't quite see the name. Brian, can you help me with that name?
Debakas, maybe it's a family surname.
Yep, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Yeah, hi.
Yep, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Fran Baca, 50926 Lexington Glen Drive. I did want to say that how the noise of the data center's generators would be controlled and their compliance with county regulations was discussed really early on, and I appreciated that. But I was disappointed that there was no mention of control for the HVAC systems, which have to run 24/7 in order to cool the equipment. And data center HVAC systems are known to create the harmful low humming sound that can travel up to two and a half miles away. And the pitch and frequency of this hum is such that even if we don't actively hear it, it's still being registered in our brain and can't be tuned out. And this sound has been linked to harmful health effects, including headaches, difficulty sleeping, stress, depression, et cetera. Research is still limited at this time, but these, but it is coming from places that have approved data centers only to find out later the harmful effects that it had on residents. So I don't know currently if our county has any regulations in place for HVAC system noises or not. Sorry, I'm not sure. But I did want to ask about the need for county regulation to exist for that if needed, and really, that sound modification needs to be taken into consideration before this land is approved for this project. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who wishes to speak in opposition? Last chance. The public hearing on Bill Number 33-24 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Motion to table.
Ms. Drake? I recognize Ms. Drake. Go ahead.
Motion to table.
Motion to table. Is there a second?
Should we get a rebuttal?
What? Oh, yeah, that's true. I always forget to rebuttal. Go ahead, Mr. Dance. You have five minutes to rebuttal and address any concerns or questions that were raised. I even wrote it down here, but I always forget that part.
I know, I appreciate that, no problem. Let me try to answer some of the, the ones that have been brought up. If I miss something, Angela can certainly pick it up. We did work with the Judy Creek Task Force on this particular project, and as part of that, some of the things that you see that we're doing on this site plan actually came out of conversations and discussions with the Judy Creek Task Force. So we'll be taking that, and we'll actually be working with them on additional things that would happen on this particular property for the protection of Judy Creek. That's one of the main things that, that we actually see here and that we have brought to the attention of the contingent purchaser. And they certainly want to be part of that process.
Can you speak up, please?
Okay. That they want to be part of that process for protecting the creek. So they, we will be working with Judy Creek Task Force further as, as, assuming this gets approved with the design, we will take into consideration what they have asked as well for this particular project. The HVAC and, is inside, just as we had mentioned about the generators, those are inside. So from the noise standpoint, since they're inside the So from the noise standpoint, since they're inside the building, there would be any kind of less noise that would happen as compared to ones that are sitting outside the building. And we've had talked about that. The other issue is they were talking about the low hum that's there. They do a lot of noise attenuation for this data center. The ones that they may be talking about, those could be older data centers. Uh, these have progressed and basically there's been an evolution on the development and design of these buildings. So the latest designs will be taken into account for this. The other thing that we had talked about previously was that right to our north is the toll road. There's a constant hum with the toll road. I live right close to the toll road, so I can say for sure that no matter when I go outside or even in my house, there's still that hum for the toll road. That's actually higher than any noise decibels that would come from the data center itself. There were some questions about, uh, the diesel fuel, if they were going to have that type of generator. There is another issue that, that goes along with this particular one that I need to bring up to council. Right to the north of this particular site, on the north side of the toll road, we designed a subdivision that basically has a community well to it. That community well is just like a well for any municipality. So anything within what we call the time concentration for certain areas for public water has to have approvals for any kind of uses, and that would include diesel fuel or anything like that. Because there's a time of concentration that when the residents are talking about any kind of spills, that has to take into account, they may not even be able to use those. They may actually have to use, uh, natural gas instead. But that has to go through an approval process. So it's very important the council realize there is a public well right to the north of this that will have restrictions on how the site gets developed as well. And it's also a protection for the area and for the residents in Harris Township. Uh, the rural wetlands we had talked about, and we will be doing that, uh, protection along Judy Creek. Uh, we want to make sure the, one of the gentlemen stood up and said that, yeah, that, that the setback is basically the drainage board setback seventy-five feet. I can tell council right now that basically the farmer was out there, they farm right up to the top of that bank. So by us putting that hundred foot on either side of the creek, that will allow that vegetative buffer protection and for any nitrates and any siltation to get into the creek itself. That's not happening right now. And if this land were to be continued to be farmed, there would still be a degradation of the type of water quality that they talk about for Judy Creek. So that's why that was an important concept of what we do in this plan, and that's why we also have that as a commitment to make sure that that's part of any design development that happens as part of what we are doing here for the data center. There were a lot of questions about the traffic. We had talked about that, that there would be an impact study that would be done that has to be approved by the county engineering department. They talked about the access point on to Bittersweet Road. The access point on Bittersweet Road would have to be approved by county engineering. They take into account the traffic that goes down there. So when they're talking about school buses, when they're talking about any type of vehicles, that has to be determined. And they take a look at both the miles per hour that's there, the site distance from the top of the hill where the bridge is to where that driveway opening is to meet, uh, meets all the requirements. What we also talk about doing on the driveways, and I know I talk about when we're doing projects with council, that county, city engineering will take a look at to see if we have to put de-acceleration lanes and passing blisters on everything to increase the safety factor for what happens for anything coming in and going out of this particular site. One of the questions that had been asked about, um, the air quality. Air quality has to meet all, both not county standards, but also federal standards. So when they were talking about any kind of air that's coming out of the data centers for that, they have to have permits for everything that goes on. They have to meet all the federal standards, the Clean Air Act nineteen seventy, those all have to be adhered to. And if there's any permitting that has to happen, those permits are usually done on an annual basis. They have to be renewed. So that is part of what we have to do and the restrictions that apply to this particular project. Uh, we talked about noise construction.
Five minutes are up, but I will open the floor to any council member who would like to ask a question of Mr. Dance. So council members. Mr. Thomas?
Containment on the diesel fuel, um, generators. Mr. Dance, can you answer to that?
Well, the, what I said, yeah, what I'd said was that it would have to meet all the, the standards. But what they've also got to deal with in this particular case is, is that there's a public well, uh, just to the north of the toll road. So what that means is, is that when you put a well in and it's for public usage, there has to be an area that we call time concentration or time of travel for a public well, whether it's one year, five year, or ten years. And there's only certain kind of uses that can be allowed and permitted within that. And if it's too close to that well, then you cannot do it. That could fall under for a, a, a diesel type of situation where someone has diesel fuel on, on the site. And so they have to have that approved by federal standards before you'd be able to do it, just because of the public well that would go there. There are generators that are done for, for data centers that also are natural gas. We have natural gas available to the site as well. So that's part of that design standard that we talk about. If they decide what type of generator they would have in the buildings for the backup supplies, and it still has to meet all the requirements for federal, state, and local standards.
So if there's no well there, say there's no well there, you still have to have a containment, don't you?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. If, i- if you, if they're inside the building, you still have to have a containment area for any kind of fuel. So if there's a spillage, it's got to be able to be contained within that area. And they're designed for the size of the tanks. So when they're talking about a, a million gallon tank, I, I haven't seen that in a data, I don't know what data center that is. But the ones that I have seen, wherever there is a fuel, it has to have, there's a concrete basically containment area that has to be designed to be able to handle that. Thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Kandray?
I've got a list of questions here. If you'd help me answer these. Appreciate all the residents that came up and spoke in opposition because they had some good questions that I had, you know, it made me think too. So, um, can I ask you, do you have any idea on the construction time? There's a, a question about how long will it take for this construction to take place? How long will the roads be tore up? Do we have any idea how to estimate that?
For a million square foot building, I'm gonna assume that it would probably be maybe a year or so. There's another part of what goes with that. Um, we've had conversations that, uh, with Sky, when they do any type of construction for this project, assuming that it gets approved, uh, Sky is already working to figure out how the construction schedule will work at this location to not impact any of the traffic that's on Bittersweet Road and on Cleveland Road. So there would be a plan for construction traffic in and out of this particular site to be, and they would have to adhere to that plan.
Okay. Um, there was a question raised about location of where power lines are going to be extended and would they be near residences?
Yeah. So the power lines, the, there's already two sets of transmission lines that bisect the site. They're on the western side of the site, away from any of the residential areas. So if you know where current road is, that's basically the area where those transmission lines are. That's where we would be tying to that transmission line and then running it along Cleveland Road, where there's no single-family homes, to the substation that we have shown on the preliminary site plan.
Okay.
And so, and then also the EMFs, when somebody had talked about those. The EMFs, uh, they, they are basically, yeah, electromagnetic fields that go on. Uh, the way AEP does stuff is that their easements are large enough so that at the edge of their easements, the EMFs are, are basically negligible and it doesn't cause a problem. And because we're running the lines from the existing transmission to our substation, we are the ones that basically would have any effect on that. And that also takes into account where buildings are located as well. So that's one of the reasons why you have to have the acreage that you do when you have these transmission lines. And in this particular case, the railroad's kind of close too. You have to make sure there's no vibrations.
Okay. I'm gonna keep going on the questions that I heard tonight. Maybe you can or can't answer this. One of the remonstrators mentioned that, you know, and I've noticed to before in our computer, you get a server kind of smell or a computer smell when that's multiplied in a structure.
Yeah.
Is there any, um, evidence that that odor causes a problem or does OSHA regulate?
Oh, yeah, those are, again, all the standards when we talk about the air pollution standards and the Air Quality Act from nineteen seventy. They have to meet all those for permitting. So if there is any kind of chemicals, and I haven't heard of that for these data centers, but I realize that a home computer could have, uh, an odor to it. But eh, what happens in the data centers, they have to meet all the air quality standards for federal guidelines, local and state. So that, that's very important that that gets taken care of.
Okay. Um, so on the written commitments that the contingent purchaser has agreed to or that the present landowner has agreed to, uh, would they be willing to look at any other contingencies and commitments? Like, for example, out on the GM Samsung battery plant, because that's a new technology to the fire territory out there to New Carleal, there was a requirement that they would provide quarterly training to the area of fire departments that protect that that building as part of their written commitments. Would this developer commit to providing quarterly training, say the first year, to Clay Fire Territory, Mishawaka Fire Department in Penn Township?
We, yeah, I, I think that that would, i- if it's gonna help the, the fire department and protection for the building itself, I think that that's a doable thing.
Maybe something biannual training thereafter, you know, after the initial.
Yeah, I think the territorial fire department can work with the, uh, the contingent purchaser on that. Absolutely.
So the issue that was brought up, you don't even know it's gonna be diesel or natural gas for the generators yet. Um, if there were going to be diesel storage facilities on, on site, would the contingent purchaser agree to monitoring wells for diesel leakage? Would that, would that, that be required of them?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if that gets to be a requirement, absolutely, that they would, they would have to do that in monitoring well on there. And I, I think when they get done with their design work, um, that would be something they could take a look at as part of the contingency. So if they decide to do diesel and, and you want a monitoring well, that could be done.
Okay. How do you deal with obsolescence? You know, that's always talked about when we look at this new technology.
From, from when we have talked with, with them, they don't see a horizon right now where data storage of the, these types of centers are gonna be obsolete anytime soon. What they're seeing right now is because of AI that's happening and that's just starting. That takes a humongous amount of computing power to be able to do that. And they don't see that lessening at any point in time. So what's occurring right now, just because of everybody's using their phones and their computers and everything else, there's a lot of basically data that is being used and, and being manipulated constantly. And it's not going down. So for, you know, if you're investing to build a one point one million square foot building, you might be over two billion dollars worth of improvements. You're not doing that so that you don't get to use it in five years or ten years. So they've already looked at that horizon and they see that we're gonna be past that, that this is not gonna become obsolete. We're not gonna be using less data or less computing power anytime soon.
Would they agree to an obsolescence clause in the commitments?
We'd have to see the, the commitment clause, but, but that could be done also as part of a development, uh, issue. Absolutely.
Okay. How about increasing the, uh, buffer on Judy Creek? Versus the two-hundred foot versus maybe, maybe go up to two fifty, three hundred foot?
Yeah, we, and we could do that also, uh, in a development agreement as part of the building process. We could take a look at that. What they would just want to make sure of is, is that if that gets increased, it still works within, in their plans, but absolutely. That was one of the things that the Judy Creek Task Force also asked us to take a look at.
Okay. And then I have questions about paying for infrastructure and tax incentives. Would that be directed to Bill Shalial?
Probably Bill Shalial, because, you know, I do not know anything about the tax abatement part.
Cause there was one question brought up by one of the remonstrators tonight that, you know, we're, if you're gonna have to bring in all the infrastructure for Mishawaka, um, would it, would this extend a TIF district and would the TIF district then pay for the improvements, whereas the developer doesn't actually really pay for the improvements and maybe Mr. Shalial could?
That might, that might be something for Bill as far as the TIF district goes, but just because they extend water and sewer to a site doesn't necessarily, uh, keep in mind that nothing's being annexed of the TIF district wouldn't be in Mishawaka or anything like that. And Bill's probably standing right behind me, so he could probably answer.
Maybe Mr. Shalial can answer those questions.
Is that?
I think that's all I had. That's for me. Um. Maybe, maybe, maybe one thing, this is your area of specialty. Somebody mentioned on one of the last speakers about drywells, which I know drywells are no longer permitted like they used to be.
No.
Can you explain about that?
So what happens in the county, um, and I probably said it a lot of times on projects, we're required to meet, uh, onsite drainage for all development. We can't spill water offsite is what it gets down to. So any kind of development that gets done on the site, we have to meet a five point six inch rainfall per twenty-four hour period. They may call that a ten-year rain event. So the retention areas that you see on this site are designed to handle all the runoff from the buildings and the parking area. So again, those, were they talking about the petroleum type of byproducts or whatever? Petroleum has a tendency, it can infiltrate into the sand areas of the soils, but it won't get into Judy Creek. And that's why we've located the retention areas where you see those, so that they're away from the creek themselves. But, uh, Sky, as part of the county engineering review for any site plan, they have to review it and make all the drainage standards and they have to meet it onsite is what will end up happening. And yeah, you, we don't use drywells anymore for that kind of work.
Thank you. Those are my questions for you. And Bill's behind you. Maybe I'm.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Couple of questions, Mr. Dance, for you.
Thank you.
For you get Bill. Okay.
So, uh, again, thank you everyone for showing up and expressing your questions. I know I was at the meeting last week and it was very frustrating when, when the meeting stopped abruptly without questions being answered. Uh, so I hope you got some of your answers tonight. Uh, I wanted to ask, somebody, one of the speakers, and I didn't catch her name, said that this is just phase one and this is a slippery slope. But when you talked about phase one and phase two, that was just for the nine hundred acres. Is that correct?
That's correct.
In other words, this nine hundred acres is phase one and then there's other projects done.
Right. If there, if there was to be another type of project, the, that where they were talking about moving closer to Elkhart or whatever, they would have to come back before this committee. They'd have to go to area plan and they'd have to come back here and explain whatever the project is.
And then Mr. Francis mentioned that the area plan commission did listen, uh, which led to some of the commitments that were added to the, um, to the property. Uh, and also, uh, listened to some other questions. So it sounds, it sounds like some of the question, the questions that Mark had, that the developer might be open to continue listening to make adjustments to the project based on the concerns of the residents. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Because my understanding, this is the rezoning tonight and not the project itself. So you can't really, we can't really talk about what's going to happen with the project until we actually have the buyer.
Yeah.
So, uh, I, I, as long, I, I just want to make sure you would be open to, the developer would be open to?
No, they would be. The, the contingent purchaser, if this were to go through, they would be more than willing to listen to everything that was a concern and see if they could implement that as part of the design for the project.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Dance, I'd like to follow up on one of Mrs. Hess's questions, and that's, uh, the stages. I believe I heard one of the speakers, and I don't remember which one it was, that said the utilities, and I believe it was maybe the sewer and water, were being pushed out to Buckeye Road. And if that is the case, that does suggest that we're looking at future growth to the east.
No, I think, I think what, and if Ken's still here or whatever, what they had said, and I'm not part of all the, the conversations there. When they do long-term planning for extension of main lines for water and sewer, they basically do what's called a service area. And what they take a look at is see that if they're gonna be spending monies to be able to do something and they're coming from Veterans Parkway, what would be the extent if they were going to extend it? So they have to pick an area that they think is a, a good location. And what you had just mentioned was, they said that the service area potentially had a limit of Buckeye Road. And the reason for that is, is that probably that if they wanted to keep everything on what we call a gravity line for sewer without doing lift stations and other things that get very, very expensive, that, that would probably be the limit, uh, of what they do. But anytime I've ever seen a municipality, they don't look at a specific, uh, project. They look at a service area. So like the city of South Bend, when they're looking at where their existing water and sewer lines are up by Notre Dame, they see how far basically they can get to that would still allow development to occur. And, and that's what they look at.
Are there council questions for Mr. Dance, Mr. Schetzel?
I have a question. I'd like to, uh, give some statistics if I can before the question. I did, I, you know, I think, I grew up in a farm and the concern for farmland, I think, is, is a fair concern. I love growing up on a farm and I appreciate those concerns. So I did some research. Um, there are one point nine billion acres. There are 1.9 billion acres of land in the United States, 878.6 million acres of that land is farmland, as of 2023, or going into this year. Last year, in 2023, we lost 1.8 million acres of that farmland to development. Now, can we still feed the American population based on what we have? I looked at several different sources and came up with an average of, of a statistic from the sources, it takes 1.8 acres to feed the average American. 1.8 times 340 million people is 612 million acres. We have 878.6 million acres of farmland. Therefore, we can feed ourselves, and 20% of US farm products by value are exported. So that, those statistics helped me to feel better about the fact that we are, across the country, using 1.8 million acres of land that was farmland to, for other uses. We're, we're in pretty good shape there. My question then is, because I, I think we're in good shape, but I think we do need to be careful. If this is rezoned, is there any plan to rezone any of the contiguous properties, especially the farm properties? If this 900 acres is rezoned?
No, no. The, the deal that the Blooms have is just for the 900, 904 acres. This is for single ownership only. This isn't a speculative development where a developer wants to come in and buy property and do an industrial park or something else. This is a single-use owner, that's it. So no, they're-
So they have no plan to annex-
No.
Or, I'm sorry, not annex, rezone-
Not annex, but rezone or whatever.
Any further farmland-
No.
-contiguous to this farmland? And you know of no other company's attempt to do that?
No, no. And they would have to go through this procedure, even if somebody did, and they would have to have something in mind, because obviously from the council, they would want to see some detailed type plans also.
Thank you.
Mr. Danch, I want to follow up on that.
Yeah.
I don't know if we have the zoning map. Can we see the zoning map for this? Because there is something called a spot zoning, and generally, when you do spot zoning, you do open up the additional parcels. It makes it much easier. This has been a concern I've heard about for my 20 years here, and this does look like a spot zoning in one sense. So it does increase the likelihood that additional parcels adjoining will eventually become industrial.
Well, not necessarily industrial, but they would have to have, if, if somebody were to come back, again, you guys, now, you have that corridor study for Capitol Avenue and the uses that are there. So if you take a look at that corridor study, it shows that there are areas here that were acceptable for this type of development and actually going farther to the south. So from that standpoint, I mean, obviously, that, that corridor study took into account that the ag land, probably along the bypass going up to maybe 23, there could be pressure for that to change later. But again, somebody's got to have the ability to do that.
Yeah, I just find it deeply ironic, when I first came on the council many years ago, we were doing a commercial rezoning on State Road 23, and it was a spot zoning. And we heard just tonight that State Road 23 has almost gone completely commercial. And that is the problem when you do the spot zonings, is that it really does open up the adjoining parcels.
Yeah, the difference on that particular thing is there was not a corridor study for State Road 23. In fact, in all my years with the Area Plan Commission, we greatly pushed for a corridor study of State Road 23. I've even offered Abby to help her with that, if she wants to do something still. But the difference is, is there wasn't a comp plan to back it up. Also, if you look at this, we can't zoom out here, but if you looked at this, zoomed out, this section of agriculture is a little bit of a donut hole, completely surrounded by residential and commercial development, both within the county and adjacent Mishawaka, and then even further, like as you go into Elkhart County. The majority, when we talk about the ag preservation and that is along, if you look, this is a small donut hole. If you look at the whole county, most of the ag land is south and to the west.
Any further council comments or questions for Mr. Danch?
Do you want Bill?
I have another question, but maybe not for Mr. Danch, maybe for Mr. Shalio.
Okay. You want to ask me?
No, he said for Mr. Shalio.
Mr. Shalio, one of the questions I got is, what is in this for our community? And of course, the jobs, right? I did take the time to look at what some of the jobs in a data center pay, just, let's just name a few real quick. Data center engineer, 102,000 average a year, project managers, 119,000, cloud architects, 123, electrical engineers, 111, data engineers with one to four years' experience, 89,000, network engineers, 140,000. So those are some pretty high-paying jobs that would be involved. I also looked at for, at what's the, some of the residual wealth for each million dollars spent on data processing? It creates an additional .5 million in direct, indirect, and induced jobs in the area. So you have that, the residual jobs. You mentioned to me, oh, well, you have a higher tax base as well, but you mentioned to me that there's a possibility that the company interested would be willing to work with the community on projects. And so as I look at Granger and people talk to me about the things I want, the fire protection, of course, is one of the things, if the new facility does come, money for schools, the Anderson Road Park, paths, other green spaces, like we see in the southeast corner of that property, the potential for revitalizing a wetlands area. Are these things that you believe that this buyer would be interested in helping the community with?
Yeah, so, thank you for the question. So to this point, we have not had any conversations yet about development agreements, incentive models, anything like that. I will tell you, from, from the other projects we've done, projects of scale, we have introduced other, other fees, other, other revenue collection sources to help with schools, to help with green space development, to help with other things. Fire equipment, the AWS deal, when we talk about that here, end of the month, has a, has a provision for taxes per building, or a fee per building to pay for fire, fire-related services. So, yeah, absolutely, I believe that this, this is the type of company that, from a community engagement standpoint, will be very involved with the schools, and not just PHM schools, but, but all the regional schools, will be very involved with green space, open space type things. Again, I think Mr. Danch, on multiple times, has said, you know, right now, they can't commit to more with the Judy Creek area because they don't own it, but I think there's an opportunity to have a huge conversation about Judy Creek and conservation zones and things like that, once, once a site is owned. So, yeah, I think there's, there's a lot of things that this parlay's into development. So if, if you look at the Capitol Avenue corridor, it's kind of a whole, you know, up until Mishawaka did the Beacon Parkway projects, you know, the success we had on Capitol Avenue, really from McKinley North to the, the toll road interchange, was a gas station with a pizza restaurant and a mini storage warehouse unit. So the Capitol Avenue corridor, which was built with great promise of suppliers and developers as part of the H2 project, really has never, has never crossed that threshold into, to being a revenue source for development projects up in the northeast. A project like this really becomes a catalyst to provide revenues and provide development opportunities for parks, for green space, for connection to the Granger Trail Network, for all those kinds of things that are being talked about. So I think there's a lot of those things. I, I do want to address something that Mr. Katanzerite said, and, and, you know, the, the fire training that we have in the GM project, that's in a development agreement, so that's a quarterly requirement to do fire training, same with the monitoring wells. Those two provisions are also going to be as part of the AWS project in the development agreement. Those are things that would probably be more appropriate in a development agreement versus written commitments, and, and something we would certainly encourage, so.
Can you answer the question that that one person raised about infrastructure? That probably is a development agreement question, why they got to ask for abatements? Will the, will the Tiff District, would a Tiff District pay for the infrastructure improvements?
So, so a couple of things. Right now, there is no economic development area that would encompass the St. Joe Farm site. The redevelopment commission has authorized funds to study the existing AM General Economic Development Area, the opportunity perhaps to extend up Capitol Avenue and to, to capture the site. We would work in coordination with City of Mishawaka, what a potential EDA would look like for that area. I would tell you that the GM deal, the AWS deal, very different on how infrastructure were dealt with. What we would do in this case, again, from day one, we told the developer, as Mr. Danch has said, that utility extension costs are your cost. I think he also did mention, if there's a potential to do oversizing of pipes, things like that, that's probably something where the community gets involved in, whether it is, is part of, a, a part of the tax revenue collection or some type of other funding that goes into that, to do that. So I, I think those are, there's a lot of pieces of that still on the table that, that we discuss how we get from A to B. But again, we don't, we don't anticipate that's a, a local cost that, that we, the county or the city bear for utility extensions.
Thank you.
Mr. Root?
Uh, Ms. Drake.
I don't know if I understand what I'm talking about here. I, I heard rumors, is, is there some other study going on over there with Antero?
So we have, we actually have-
If it's not done?
Yeah, we actually have four different studies going on right now. First one is a study with Lawson Fisher Associates to study Douglas Road from Mishawaka city limits to Capitol Avenue, to look at improving the roadway. Right now, it's, that section of roadway is still a very underdeveloped section of Douglas, two lanes, no center turn lane, no shoulders, no drainage. So we're in the middle of a study there. I'm sorry, yeah.
Railroad tracks.
Yeah, and, and as part of that-
Bill, because at one time, we were told there was going to be an underpass put in there at Douglas.
Yeah, so that, as part of that study, we would actually, we're looking at an overpass. We have to go over because the groundwater is high there, so we can't go under. And there's no positive outlet to drain that water if we were to go under. So we're actually, as part of the LFA design, actually looking at the right-of-way and would purchase the right-of-way, we would need for an overpass footprint, any utilities. Again, we don't know where the utilities are going to go, if they're going to go along the Douglas Road corridor, to Cleveland Road corridor, to go east to this project, but any utilities would be built outside of that footprint. So that's the first study we're doing. The second study we're doing is another one with LFA to do a utility study for sewer. Ken Prince mentioned it earlier, the Daisy Road Lift Station, it's down at Jack's, or near Jefferson and, and Capitol, looking at a sewer study to extend sewer north along Capitol Avenue through a series of lift station forced mains to provide sewer to that service area. That service area would go, potentially could, go all the way east to Buckeye for the sewer service study area. So that's the second study we're doing. The third study we are doing is an update with Antero on the Capitol Avenue corridor master plan. So that was started, gosh, I bet it's been six months ago by now, maybe a little longer. And what that was is, is it's a two-phase study. First phase study is to look at power, look at where the utilities are, take all those studies in, and really do an update of that 2003 study that was done, I think originally either by Coal Associates or DLZ. So that's a study that's going on, two, three. And then the fourth study is a, a grant application study in partnership with Elkhart and Western Railroad, or Patriot Rail, to look at the rail corridor along McKinley Avenue, that's north of McKinley Avenue, and how rail could work, extending from its current location on current, up to capture some potential property along Capitol Avenue. So those are the four active studies happening in this area right now.
I guess my question then is, if we're paying, I assume, large amounts of dollars for the studies, does it make sense that we're moving forward before the studies have really told us the information that we need to know?
Yeah, so the, the, the update study for, for the Antero group in particular, really informs, you know, is based off the 2003 Capitol Avenue study. So using that as the model really stays in sync with that. So it really is just an update of the, the technical utility issues in that area. The other studies too, the water and sewer, or the sewer study we're doing, really aligns with this project. So it's nice, we're ahead of the curve, much like with any IEC. We spent a lot of upfront money to get to a point where we knew conditions and, and real conditions. That's what these studies are doing. So we're right at a perfect, kind of a perfect nexus for all these things coming together.
Mr. Root?
Mr. Katanzright?
So whether or not we pass the zoning tonight, those studies are beneficial to us no matter what, right?
Absolutely. And, and I will say, Mishawaka's been a fantastic partner in all those. We, we see that this is an opportunity. And I, I will say, while Mishawaka's been a good partner in this, I think conversations we've started having with Ken Lindsay, the Harris Township trustee, as it relates to fire territory issues, as it relates to parks and open space, I think those are going to be additional pieces that we can plug into this model. So an opportunity to address some of these other issues that are being presented today.
Thank you.
Any further council questions for Mr. Danch or Mr. Shalio? All right, hearing done, I will entertain a motion on Bill number 33-24.
Mr. Root?
Ms. Drake. Chair acknowledges Ms. Drake.
Motion to table.
Is there a second? Final call for a second on the motion. Motion dies for lack of a second. May I have a motion on the measure?
I make a motion that we amend Bill 3324, include the written commitments as they were presented to us and discussed tonight.
All right, we have a motion to amend the amendment to include the written commitments. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Discussion on the motion to amend? Hearing done, clerk, will you please take the roll? On the motion to amend?
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Motion stands nine zero.
Let the record show that the motion to amend to include the written commitments was passed by a nine zero vote. The amendment now becomes part of the proposed bill. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Katanzright?
That's me, yeah. Motion to pass Bill 3324 as amended.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Katanzright, second by Mr. Tanner, to approve Bill number 33-24. Is there any further council discussion on the motion? Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. My colleagues were very thorough in the, the questions that they sought for clarification this evening, as were the public, so I'm going to limit myself to comments. Studebaker, Singer, Oliver, Ball Band, Uniroil, Dodge, Wheel Abraider, and the list goes on. This community exists and was built upon by industry. First, it was initial settlements and gregarian farming just to sow the land. Then it was the presence of bog iron and power generated by the St. Joseph River. Then it was considered advanced manufacturing at the time for chilled plows, carriages, and sewing machines. We continue to be an industrious community with AM General, Cleveland Cliffs, Lippert, and we started evolving with Mullen Automotive, GM Samsung Joint Venture Battery Plant, and now the potential, or in some cases, the reality of data centers. Our community cannot and will not survive alone on Notre Dame Medical Centers and government agencies. Our community cannot and will not survive alone on the retail, commercial, and restaurant industry. We heard a lot about not being against this project, or not being against the Bloom family, but being against this particular project in this particular location. This location was carefully and comprehensively identified for a mix of industrial and/or office use as part of the Capitol Avenue Corridor Land Use Plan, completed in 2003, including with cooperation from the county, city, community stakeholders, involvement by the public, available to the community for review and comment for the last 20 years. It was produced by DLZ, just to confirm what Mr. Shalio mentioned. We heard a lot about not wanting to be Mishawaka, or to be annexed into Mishawaka. That, as you heard several times tonight, but it's also been the standard across the state, would require voluntary effort by both the city and the landowners, which has been the case for all annexations within the last 30, 40 years, including the portions of Granger along Gumwood, and would be the case in this area if ever there was a desire to annex it, again, by both parties involved. We heard a lot about wanting to live in a quiet, country lifestyle, and that is why people choose Granger. We heard a lot about choosing not to be in a municipal government some 40 years ago. I ask, do you use Mishawaka roads? Do you use South Bend roads? Do you use either municipalities' park amenities? Do you- Do you work at businesses, industrial or otherwise, in Mishawaka or South Bend? For that matter, let's add Roseland, Walkerton, New Carlyle, or Osceola to the list. Lakeville. Your preference for a quiet countryside lifestyle is only made possible by the industries and the job centers which act as force multipliers to support numerous other service industries in our community. Your preference to evade a municipal government abdicates your representation to a single vote on the county council. That may be an unfair and undue pressure on Mr. Shetzel, who is your representative in this particular area, but it is the truth. Good, bad, or otherwise, that was an active choice some years ago, and it is a passive choice by anyone pursuing the natural social contract that comes along with choosing to live either in or outside a municipal boundary. All that said, we've heard a lot of information here this evening and gained considerable context. The preliminary information meeting held at St. Pius could have and should have been handled very differently. Similar happened in New Carlyle with the New Day Homeless Intake Center in South Bend, and now this project. We, as local representation, as government representatives, must do a better job of proactively engaging with our constituencies, with the people that we serve. And for that, whether it's my district or not, whether it was my initiative or not, I apologize. We need to do better. Tonight, we've heard a lot of questions, we've heard a lot of answers to those questions, some which may or may not be satisfactory to what you require. Those answers by the petitioner, the extensive research I've personally committed over the last few weeks, along with the assurances by stakeholders such as the City of Mishawaka, who clarified and confirmed their level of commitment, meets my expectations for the appropriate due diligence and confidence for the net benefit this type of project provides to this community, and I do plan on approving the zoning change. Thank you.
Any further counsel discussion? Seeing none, Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I got a message from Abby that I want to make clear to make sure that the additional written commitments are clear. Am I correct that the motion to amend to add the written commitments, or to include the written commitments from the Area Plan Commission? And then the additional ones that Mr. Katandrite elicited?
I, I think I got a verbal assurance from Mr. Danch, but I think he verbally acknowledged that more than likely in the development agreement, likewise, and that's what Bill alluded to too, I think, as far as the fire service training for area fire departments to respond to that location, monitoring wells if they would happen to be diesel-powered generators, and consideration of the duty great buffer being extended would be negotiated in a separate-
All right, so, so they-
The, the area plan commission-
Those would be addressed in the development agreement? So the, the written commitments that are part of what you're voting on are just the written commitments that came from the Area Plan Commission?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I was told we needed to amend that to include those.
If you go any further, you're going to get a court report.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure, and Abby is far more knowledgeable than I in this area, so thank you.
May we have a motion to, on bill thirty-three twenty-four with the amendment?
We do.
If I may, more specifically-
So, okay, we have a motion by Mr. Katandrite and a second by Mr. Tanner?
And, and if I may, Mark, if you would probably prefer to reword your motion, I would suggest that we pass it subject to the written commitments rather than as amended.
Yeah, that's usually how we do it.
Mr. Chair, I would like to withdraw my motion.
Okay, the problem is we've already passed the amendment.
Someone who's voted for it can make a motion to reconsider that.
That was any of the nine of us.
I'll motion that we reconsider-
We have a motion to reconsider the amendment.
I motion that we reconsider the amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
There are discussion?
Mr. Root, I would make a motion that we-
Well, that's the deal, we got to deal with this motion first.
Okay.
All in favor of reconsidering the motion on the amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Okay, that is back on the table currently, then.
So then, is the motion to pass subject to the written commitments that came from the Area Plan Commission?
That is correct.
Correct.
Okay.
That's my motion.
I will second that motion.
All right, so that's your motion, Mr. Katandrite?
That is my motion.
All right, so now we have a motion to pass subject to the written commitments from Mr. Katandrite. We have a second from Mr. Tanner, any final counsel discussion?
Mr. Root, I couldn't help but think tonight, as we were listening to the earlier tax abatement approval for Lippert and for Holiday Corporation on the Cleveland Road agricultural land that we rezoned probably two to three years ago. And, and if I looked at that, though it's much smaller, it was 52 acres. It was agricultural land that Holiday Corporation came to us and told us they wanted to build a distribution warehouse at, and they really didn't give us any specifics to it. And it would be delineated in the future. And I equate much of what we're doing tonight, a lot like that, only it's more contentious and on a much larger scale. But that's what we had to do two or three years ago. Holiday Corporation came to us, we had to vote to rezone that land, really not knowing what it was going to be. And we found out three years later it's going to be Lippert components. So it, it's, in a similar fashion, I think that's what we're doing, this exercise tonight is similar to that.
But you know what, Mr. Katandrite, in my humble opinion, that's part of the problem. That's part of the problem that we are faced with, and then the public gets very frustrated with us. But that, that should change. I don't care if it's on a small scale or a very large scale such as this project. That is part of the problem.
I would agree.
Yeah, well-
Part, part of the problem, though, is state statutes that dictate how we, some of our process and processes.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Are we ready? Seeing no more counsel comment, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Shetzel?
This is the motion to pass the bill. As with the suggested-
I, I, I'm sorry, you got me confused. What are we voting on right now?
Right now, we are on the final vote to pass the bill.
Okay.
As, along with the written commitments as suggested by Area Plan.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
No.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katandrite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
I'd like to explain my vote. I, I think that 30 days extension was not unreasonable. Just want that to be said. Thought that was a, um, kind of common sense to me to hear the folks and listen to all their questions. Or, we had some good questions tonight, good answers, Mr. Danch.
Point of order, Mr. Thomas, you had an opportunity to voice that concern prior to casting a vote?
Go ahead, Mr. Thomas, just cast your vote.
And I would further like to say, I am pro-business, and I know dat- data centers are needed, and, uh, my vote's yes.
Mrs. Drake?
No.
President Root?
No.
Bill passes six, three.
Thank you, let the record show that bill number thirty-three dash twenty-four was passed by a vote of six to three. That concludes land use and planning tonight. Next- Please. Next up is unfinished business. We need a motion to approve the minutes from the April meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Morton, seconded by Mr. Fig. Any counsel discussion on the motion? All in favor of approving the April minutes, say aye.
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 I have a question, that was way too fast. Interrupted, I couldn't-
Can I still ask or no?
No.
Okay.
We're in, we're on to something new now.
Sorry, I was, had all of this going on, so in that time, it's really round.
All, so we have the aye, all those in opposition to the minutes?
Aye.
You're in opposition to the minutes?
I am opposition.
All right. I asked for a motion on-
Sorry, I had lots of noise over there.
All right, the motion passes eight to one. Next up is a review of Mr. O'Brien's legal services. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved was made by Mr. Fig, seconded by Ms. Drake. Counselor discussion on Mr. O'Brien's motion to approve his legal input?
I have questions.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Mr. O'Brien, on four-two, brief communication with Councilman-
I cannot hear, I cannot hear Councilman Shetzel. Hello?
Hello?
Please take the conversations out of the room. Please leave quietly and take the conversations out of the room. Go ahead.
And I do apologize, I was distracted by the noise. Can I change my vote on the previous vote? I didn't realize what I was voting on.
Not now, it's done and recorded.
All right, very good. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, sir.
On four-two, you say you had a brief communication with Councilman concerning land use issues associated with variance. Looks like it was 15 minutes. I've had a lot of brief conversations with you that were 15 minutes that were not charged to the county. Why is this one charged to the county?
So that would have been with Mr. Thomas about variance issues with regard to Qurt and- Qurt, the concrete company?
Kurt.
Kurt.
Kurt. Qurt, I was, what the hell is that?
Right, and I had to analyze an issue with regard to the variance.
Okay, I just, I'm just kind of shocked when I see these 15-minute charges. As a professional, I do lots of things for 15 minutes that I don't charge people for. Was this the case with counsel under the previous counsel? Did the attorney charge us for 15-minute conversations?
Well, I, I haven't reviewed his bills. I, I know in the aggregate that Mr. Murphy said that prior counsel had charged maybe forty-two thousand dollars, I think, in 2022. I think last year my total charges were in the twenties. I've tried to provide a lot more detail rather than just saying reviewed, worked on, et cetera, because actually you had asked for a lot more detail.
Okay.
So sometimes they're teleconferences, sometimes they're face-to-face, sometimes there's extra research and analysis, and I, I feel like I'm conservative with regard to my, my time.
Okay, so you, basically what you're doing here is trying to be more detailed.
Yes, and I, I thought that you specifically wanted more detail.
Well, I did, but I, still, charging for a 15-minute conversation seems a bit absurd to me, but, um-
Okay, well, I, I'm doing my best to be-
Can I, can I rebut that? There are-
Uh, wait, right now, Mr. Shetzel has the floor. Mr. Thomas, you can have a turn after words.
There are, you know, other professionals who don't charge for 15-minute conversations. Maybe all lawyers do. So there's two of those. Three of those. Four of those. Okay. That's all I got.
You have the floor.
I've been in business for 35 years, yeah, I've been charged 15 minutes. I don't know what you're talking about, but it's pretty common practice, okay? I've been charged for 15 minutes, I've been charged for 10 minutes. I don't know what you're talking about. That's how it works in the business world. So I just want to make that clear.
Okay, okay. I've had, I, I'd like to rebut that. I've had many conversations with lawyers, accountants, other people-
So have I.
And I haven't been charged for 15 minutes.
Neither have I. Neither have I. Excellent. Nothing's a hundred percent, Mr. Shetzel. You think everything's a hundred percent, lock and wire?
But I do have the right-
Yeah, you did.
I do have the right, as the representative from, from my district-
So do I.
To challenge Mr. O'Brien's bill.
I understand that.
You understand that?
Yeah, and I'm just rebutting you.
I'm glad you understand.
And I understand it, and I'm rebutting you.
You can rebut away.
May, may I add an observation?
Mr. O'Brien, would you like to speak?
Yeah, please, so, I mean, I would also note that, I mean, Dan, in deference to you asking me to provide more detail some time ago, if you look at the, my bill, you'll also note that I had, um, on April 24th, and April 25th, and April 26th, some additional work that I did, that I didn't charge for, but I put the detail on there because you had specifically asked me in the past, I want to see, even if you're not charging for time, keep track of your time, even if you're not charging. So I am sincerely trying to be a good steward of the, the fiscal dollar. I, um, can just tell you, I, I believe that I am very conservative with tracking my time and trying to do as you had asked, provide more detail.
Well, I appreciate that, but I do have the right to ask you about those.
Absolutely, and, and I also, I do my best to send these out on the first of the month so that if there's an opportunity to, you know, kind of nip it in the bud and explain, I certainly appreciate that opportunity.
I've been a little distracted.
I know, I know you've had-
Is there any further counsel discussion on the motion? Mr. Morton? Yeah, we have a motion to accept Mr. O'Brien's, uh, legal advice.
No, I just have discussions for, to Mr. Shetzel. Just for example, Dan, in 2022, our previous counsel attorney billed us, I don't know, Indiana Gateway.
I can't hear you, Mark.
Our, in 2022, our previous county counsel attorney, so we spent 28,959. I was going to pull up 2023, I mean, that, I, I think it's considerably more we're paying now than we used to, but that's due to an agreement that was negotiated that I, I didn't have-
You'll remember that we budgeted differently. It used to be that the attorney's fees were kind of, I believe, all kind of, I don't want to use the word hidden, but hidden, in, other than their salaries, and one of the things that, you know, we've been working on is trying to make those more transparent.
When you say hidden, what do you mean by that?
Hidden, I, well, I think we didn't even realize as a counsel that, in our case, Mr. Triple was billing us beyond his salary.
That, okay, that's what I was hoping you would say.
You know?
Okay.
And we, we discovered that last year during the budget process when we began to look into legal fees.
So who was, who was approving those, the commissioners without our knowledge?
Correct, I believe that, I, I believe that to be the case, I believe-
That's bullshit, that's bullshit. Because, you know, I'm, I'm still impressed it's gone, that's total bullshit, because I'm glad you said that, I'm glad you made it clear, because Jamie, when you just said that Triple charged 22,000, I was about to say you're a damn liar. And I'm glad I didn't, because you just clarified it.
Yeah.
And if, if the commissioners did that without our knowledge, if you, in case you didn't hear me, that's bullshit.
And, and I don't know that we can completely-
And I'm not, I'm not fucking around.
Yeah, and I was not trying to be critical of Mr. Triple, so please, uh, please don't interpret it that way.
Well, I bet you that won't happen again, if I get up there, believe that, believe that.
But you, you will remember.
Without, I don't care who's on the council, without the council's knowledge-
Would, would the Gateway Report be inaccurate then? Because in '21, he made the same amount, that's his, it was his annual salary.
It was, I think we're just reporting the salaries for those years.
The separate billings.
It was coming out of a different fund, all of the individual billings.
But what was explained to me though, in the previous attorney, was explained to me is that because Jamie Woods was the lead county attorney, Jamie Woods would come to him and say-
I think it was the lead county attorney who was approving those.
I should say Judge Woods.
And we tried to start changing that last year during the, and we did for the Health Department-
Judge Woods would ask, judge-
And the council, and I-
But he would ask him, he'd say, I've got an issue with the county government on a, on a legal issue, I need you to, would you reel in or take it on? It does not involve the county council.
That's, that's what I'm getting to.
And I think Mr. Triple took those on, on a case-by-case basis-
That's the difference.
For Mr. Woods, but they weren't county council issues.
Extra charges did not involve issues with the county council. That's what I thought, that's what I thought I heard. And that's a, that's a big difference from what's going on now. I'm sorry.
Further counsel discussion on the motion?
And I waited till the press left to-
Thank you.
I'm just glad I asked those questions.
Abby, would you take the roll on the motion, please?
The motion is to pass.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katandrite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel? President Root?
Yes.
It passes, nine zero.
The record showed that the motion to approve Mr. O'Brien's legal advice for April was passed by a vote of nine zero. That concludes new business, next is old business, anybody have any old business? Next is privilege of the floor, limited to three minutes to anything not on the night's agenda. I don't see anybody left in the room. Is there anyone online who would like to speak to privilege of the floor? Going once, going twice, gone. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.